Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the October 27th, 2025 Hilliard City Council Regular Meeting to Order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
Dee, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Betts?
Here.
Mr. Carrier?
Here.
Ms. Cole?
Here.
Ms. Hale?
Here.
Vice President Teeter?
Ms. Vermillion?
Here.
President Cottone?
Here.
Council has copies of the October 13th, 2025 Regular and the October 20, 2025 Special Meeting Minutes. Are there any changes or corrections? Hearing none, these minutes stand approved. We will go into Commission and Board reports. Board of Zoning Appeals, Greg Betts?
Yes, the next meeting is November 20th at 6:00 p.m. in these chambers.
Thank you. Destination Hilliard. Cynthia Vermillion?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Environmental Sustainability Commission, Cynthia Vermillion?
Again, nothing to report until our next meeting on November 12th.
May keep Hilliard beautiful. Greg Betts?
Yes, at our last cleanup, we met at the Nor Islamic Cultural Center and focused our efforts on the neighborhoods and areas around Wilcox Road and Riggins Road. We collected 19 bags of trash and one bag of recycling, and special thanks to the 20 volunteers who came out to help us keep Hilliard beautiful.
Thank you. Morpsey, Mr. Rowley?
No update.
Thank you. Planning and Zoning, Emily Cole?
No further update.
Public Arts Commission, Esme, we meet next Monday. Recreation and Parks Advisory Commission, Peggy Hale?
No update.
Thank you. Adrian Place Committee, that's me again, no update. Okay, now, I want to introduce some very impressive young men, but I want you to just picture this first. So you're in high school, and you just went to lunch at McDonald's, and you're on your way back, and you see a semi truck crashed on 270. What do you do? Well, I don't know what you do, and I know, I don't know what I would do, but I'll tell you what these four young men did. They pulled the car over, and they got out of the car, and they proceeded to help the driver who was struggling and needed CPR. So these four men just jumped immediately into action. So, these gentlemen are with us tonight. Their names are Dylan Shields, Luke Self, Seth French, and Logan Faulkner. Ed Merritt, who is working with them at Recreation and Parks, is going to say a few words, or at least he was, and I don't see him in the -- there you are.
Good evening, members of council. I just wanted to come up and introduce three of our staff members. We are proud, obviously. I didn't want to steal the thunder from President Cottone, but proud to have them on our staff at the Recreation and Parks Department and working as part of our aquatics team. Obviously, they're heroics in that event, and being a first responder not only for us at the new, at the well, the community center, but then to have them going through the program that they're going through, and hopefully, futurally employable by Norwich Township Fire Department. So I'd like to call up Dylan Shields, Seth French, and Luke Self, please.
You can just wait right there. Council and city staff are proud and thank you for taking your role as first responders seriously and for providing care when a member of the public was injured until EMTs arrived. So I have a proclamation for all of you. I'll read that now. Whereas the City of Hilliard recognizes extraordinary courage, heroism, and quick response of individuals who act selfishly in times of crisis, and whereas, on their way to school, Dylan Shields, Luke Self, Seth French, and Logan Faulkner, who are all graduating from the firefighter EMTs in May at the Toll's Career and Technical Center, came upon the scene of a semi truck crash on 270. And whereas, these students immediately applied their training to provide aid to the crash victim until first responders arrived. And whereas, their actions did not stop there, as they continued to assist first responders by helping to carefully move the victim onto a backboard and into an ambulance for further transport to receive further medical care. And whereas, Luke and Dylan have served as Hilliard lifeguards since the summer, and Seth joined the staff this month. And whereas, their calm presence, teamwork, and commitment to service under pressure reflects the highest values for themselves, their families, and the Toll's Career and Technical Center and City of Hilliard, now therefore I, Tina Cottone, President of Hilliard City Council, and on behalf of council, do hereby recognize and commend Dylan Shields, Luke Self, Seth French, and Logan Faulkner for their swift action, courage, and dedication to helping others in need. And I have these for you each. Next up are changes to the agenda, and I will entertain a motion to discuss the Amazon Fuel Cell Project.
I'm moved.
Second? Do you call the roll?
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cole has a statement to read on behalf of council.
Thank you. As the council member assigned to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I've paid particular attention to the recently rescinded application by Amazon Web Services, or AWS, to modify their existing site plan to incorporate new fuel cell technology onsite for energy generation for their private data center. Like many of you, the science behind this technology is not my foremost area of expertise. I've spent hours researching fuel cells and power generation alternatives, listening to the concerns of residents, many of whom may be in the room with us this evening, asking questions of city staff and our law department, and asking questions and learning more about the perspectives of my fellow council members. What I've learned is that while the fuel cell technology may in fact be better for the environment when compared to coal plants and diesel engines, we don't actually have much information at all about the long-term impacts on the environment and on the health and well-being of all who call Hilliard home. We also don't have other data centers reliant on fuel cells of this size to compare to, given this will be the largest facility in North America and the second largest in the world. The reality is that the options before us for legal remedies may be limited. There's a distinct possibility that even were we to identify a legal remedy where we have standing, we'd face significant barriers to successfully winning. What I've maintained, and what I've heard echoed by my fellow council members, by city staff, and by our residents, is this: Just because we may not win, doesn't mean we do not try. There are some fights that are worth taking, particularly when we're fighting for our families, our friends, our neighbors, and our community. I believe this is one of those fights, and as I've said to others, I'm willing to go down swinging. This is our community. This is the air we breathe. Those are our emergency services who respond if the eight-inch gas pipe fails. Those are our schools and parks next door, and these are our neighbors right across the street. Bearing all this in mind, I would like to bring forth a motion to direct our city law director to explore all legal opportunities available to us as the city, and to research and engage with subject matter experts, both environmental and expanding to include additional legal experts who practice environmental law, and to prepare a budget accordingly for us as council to review as soon as possible. This should include next steps in the regulatory process, the timeline prior to construction, and all avenues available to us for legal recourse, and for broader public engagement with any additional regulatory bodies, up to and potentially including an injunction and/or an appeal to the Ohio EPA by November 8th. Second, I would like to ask our acting city manager to draft a letter, subject to council approval, expressly noting the extensive concerns outlined by the strong public engagement of our residents, asking the relevant parties, including Bloom Energy, AEP, and AWS, to incorporate the carbon capture technology and any additional environmental technologies available to mediate the environmental impact of this new technology. This should include a sign-on component for residents who would like to add their names to those, to the record of demanding a cleaner fuel cell project to ensure it is not just some of us, but is in fact all of us who are heard. I would invite Bloom Energy, AEP, and AWS, as well as subject matter experts throughout central Ohio, to join us in a separate community meeting or series of town halls to share more about their technology and the steps that they will take to ensure the safety and security of Hilliard residents comes first prior to profit. Finally, I would like for the city to create an FAQ section on our city website for residents who will share our concerns and want to learn more. I invite my council colleagues to join me in affirming: We are your city council and your city staff. We work for you. Let's stand up for Hilliard together and give it all we've got. Thank you.
I'll second that. I'll second.
Do we have discussion and comments from council? Do we need to vote?
Yep, we need to vote. No, I was just saying, yes, we need to take a vote.
Vote, but are we going to vote first and then comment, or comment and vote? Dee?
I was going to say, usually you do, you take the motion, the second, and then the comments, and then the vote.
Okay, go ahead. Les, microphone.
Dee, we're going to have staff and staff council do the research and do the, all the EPA, the WOSBP filed correctly, all the different avenues we might have, and coordinate.
I'm proposing staff help coordinate and bring on additional legal experts and subject matter experts.
Okay. All right. Well, because one of my concerns, and I expressed this to you today and to others, is that staff was going to administratively approve the site change and recommended that change at P&amp;Z. So my radar's up, because we had specifically objected to that, to the power board, and then, if it wasn't for Mr. Lambert, I'd have missed it. I wouldn't have been at the P&amp;Z meeting, and then called it out that it was an administrative act that was getting ready to take place that was contrary to what we wanted. I'd also mentioned, and that I don't, I didn't get any notice, there was a time period of appeal, the OSPB hearing. We didn't have any notice of that at all. So I'm a little concerned, I want to make sure that staff committed to going down on the ship if this is where we're headed, because this is a problem. And I expressed that publicly, and I said it privately to some of you, that that is one of my serious concerns. I don't mind doing it, but, and this is positive, this is very positive for our community, but it's going to take everybody rowing in the same direction. So that's what I would say.
Well, I would say that that is what Councilwoman Cole's motion is. It's council directing city staff to do just that, and to engage the other legal counsel as well, environmental lawyers, et cetera, who have expertise in this area. We are under the gun with the time for November 8th, so it needs to be done ASAP.
All right. Are we going to set a special meeting, so we can get within that November 8th timeframe, so we can all get on our calendars?
A special meeting for what?
Engagement of that council and the appropriate ordinance to pay them?
Well, we're just getting this started today, and so we're going to move quickly. We'll see where we are in a couple of days.
Right. In the contractual services budget line item, they'd be able to be paid out of that.
You got enough?
Yeah.
Good.
And I believe the motion directs any legal action necessary, so I don't think we'd have to have a meeting before the appeal.
Okay. I just, we can't swing and miss on this one.
Right, that's why we brought this forward today. Get it moving.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from anyone on council?
Are we going to have public comment after we vote on my motion, too, on this item?
Yes, public comment is next.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
And I think the sad part about this, and what we need to realize, we're going up against the state law that was specifically written to remove local control. That's the mountain we're trying to climb.
That's fair.
All right.
I would say also, though, it's incumbent upon localities sometimes to take on that mountain.
I totally agree, but I recognize it's a mountain.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what we're doing. All right, Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Pass 7-0.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the public comment portion of our meeting. Call your name, please come up, and state your name and address for the record. Each person that is speaking will have three minutes. So Anna Cana, Anna, on Jenny Don.
Is that right?
Yeah, green for go. You're good.
Thank you, council. We kind of stole our thunder here. We're all fired up, and so we appreciate that. So again, our number one concern is the kids, the kids in the schools, in the playgrounds. As you're aware, this is really close to Beacon School, it's close to my son's house, it's close to Darby Glen Playground. There's something, after Mr. Carrier just said something, it kind of reminded me of kind of how this all started. I heard about this through next door really quickly, through a resident in our neighborhood. But then, I don't know if you all know this, but Bevan Schnack, who I think is the president of, or the lead of the Planning and Zoning, came knocking on our doors, trying to become the next councilman, right, campaigning. And so what he said to me, I saw, he has a little flyer there, and he told me, I said, "Well, what are you doing about all this zoning?" And I mentioned the power plant, and he thought it was a great idea. And I started asking him questions about it, and he told me it was a done deal at that point. And so I was mad, so I told him, "Come to the Planning and Zoning meeting the next day." And so he said, "Well, it makes sense, it's by the highway." And he said, he basically told me it's a done deal, it makes sense, it's by the highway. He didn't really care about our residents' part at all. And so I'm just kind of concerned, I echo the concern that Mr. Carrier has, because the head of it, and then when I tried to ask him questions, he's like, "Well, I haven't", the meeting was the very next day, and he basically told me he didn't, he needs to still read up for the next meeting. So he didn't read any of the stuff that he actually got about this huge thing with the meeting the very next day, and he was out campaigning, and he told me it was a done deal. So that concerns me. So I was going to say something completely different, but after Mr. Carrier said that, I thought I should share that with all of you, as you kind of put people in place to carry this motion forward.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. Molly Carrier, please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Molly Carrier, and I live at 3307 Darby Glen Boulevard. I wanted to start by thanking city council for their service to this community. As a daughter of a sitting city council member, I know that sometimes this is a thankless and exhausting job. I'm here tonight not to attack or judge, but initially was to ask for your support in having council look into this. Thank you all for approving that, that means a lot. Ms. Cole presented some great options. I have a couple other options that I think might be avenues worth pursuing. The first one is opposing the installation of the eight-inch natural gas pipeline. The OPSB report says this pipeline is not their jurisdiction, yet the Ohio Power Company responses to staff questions suggest otherwise, that the gas supplier should reach out to OPSB to have this approved. I think it would be great if we could look into where that process is. The second option: Requesting Review of Procedural Deficiencies in the OPSB Board Decision. I provided you all with a packet of information tonight. The first thing in that packet is the notification, is the letter of notification that was filed with the OPSB stating that all of you received a letter when this certificate was filed in June of 2025. It's my understanding that none of you received this, and that would be because, based on the FedEx tracking, these were never even dropped off at FedEx. The labels were created, and that is as far as it went. Only two of 17 letters were mailed. One went to Deb, or Dee, excuse me, sorry, Clerk of Courts, and one went to Franklin County Commissioner President. That does not meet Ohio Administrative Code requirements for accelerated application for something like this. I think that's a great avenue that the city could pursue, and I think experts in this industry could help us look into that option. They also failed to notify or even attempt to notify Norwich Township, which is also listed in the Administrative Code as being required to be notified. The OPSB decision is also reliant on incomplete information. There are at least two examples in the responses to staff requests where the Ohio Power Company misrepresents things or avoids the question. The first one, DR 03018, it's in your packets, following the FedEx tracking for your convenience. Essentially, the OPSB asked what residences, parks, churches, and cemeteries are located within 1,000 feet of both the project fence line and the electrical generating equipment. The only answer they provided was that Darby Glen Park is 760 feet from the fence and 780 feet from the electrical generating equipment. They failed to mention the residences, which are clearly within 1,000 feet of that line. Second, DR 03050, also in your packet, stated, "Describe your coordination with local entities on aesthetics, safety, community preferences, et cetera." Ohio Power Company's response was that the project will be submitted through the Hilliard Planning and Zoning Commission. We all know that was withdrawn, so what are they doing now to coordinate with the city on these things? The OPSB believes they're coordinating with us, and it is clear that that is not the case. I believe that our council that you all just voted to appoint and work with should investigate these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carrier. Chris Ignat, please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Chris Ignat, and my address is 3446 Darby Glen Boulevard. I echo a lot of what Molly just brought up. I want to applaud all of you, Ms. Cole, for bringing that and starting the meeting this way. A lot of what we had, like I said, was built around, you know, urging you guys to step up and, you know, bring in outside counsel to file an appeal. I want to also apologize for clogging up all your email boxes. If you were getting all the petitions that were signed, you would know that you received about 700 signed petitions in the last four days, also asking you to bring in and appoint special counsel. So this is not just a Darby Glen or Beacon issue, this is a Hilliard issue, and you could clearly see that by the number of people that responded to that petition. I just want to read a couple things here. Under Ohio law, affected landowners and local officials must be notified and given the opportunity to intervene in proceedings like this. Well, this never happened. The Ohio Power Board made an unreasonable decision based on incomplete data and misleading information supplied by the Ohio Power Company. We know this because we saw, and you can read, it's public information of what was submitted, what was left out. When an agency certifies a project like this, Ohio Revised Code 4906.10 requires it to determine and document the environmental impact, the alternatives considered, and whether the project serves the public interest. Yet, the Ohio Power Board never mentions CO2. It offers no analysis of environmental impact and no comparisons to alternative solutions. It never mentions public interest. In regard to public interest, convenience, and necessity, the Ohio State Senate made it clear that this language exists to ensure local governments and citizens can speak to whether a project truly benefits the community. But how can that happen when the people affected were not even notified? Right? Please see the brief in your package, and like Molly said, that includes the tracking numbers and the lack of delivery on those. How can a decision be in the public interest if the public was never informed, never consulted, and never notified? How can a decision be called reasonable if critical environmental data is not even part of the record? This project duplicates infrastructure that already exists. AEP substations were built and approved to power these data centers, so why now? Why this? Why introduce risk, emissions, and confusion when the infrastructure was already in place? This project doesn't fill a need, it created one, to justify a private company's convenience. Let's be clear, the facility doesn't power homes, schools, or small business. It powers a private entity, it duplicates existing infrastructures and emissions, and provides no shared benefit. Thank you for your time.
Annette Singh, please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Annette Singh, 4460 Swenson Street, Hilliard. Oh, thank you. Today, I'd like to speak about my reservations in regards to the proposal of the fuel cells. This is not about a "not in my backyard" situation, this is about not in anyone's backyard situation until proper procedures are followed and emission data is provided. I would like to also state multiple contradictions through this process. First, based on the case Amazon initially filed with the zoning commission, they stated they wanted, again, to approve a Level B minor site change, emphasis minor. Later, their document was pulled, again stating that AEP believed the Ohio Power Siting Board has sole authority to approve such a project. Now, this is now described as a major update. So how can it be minor, major, all these contradictions? Second, Amazon's sustainability website states the need to reach net zero carbon emissions by 2040, using these fuel cells that rely on gas, have about a 60% efficiency, and are not sustainable. These fuel cells will emit carbon dioxide near residents, near a public park, and near an elementary school. On October 8th, the EPA approved a final air pollution permit, but there was no notice to notify residents. There's no data provided also in these calculations of emissions. I am personally appealing this specific approval, and I mailed it out today to the Attorney General, the EPA, and other members. How, again, again, the AEP code says that it will plan to minimize impacts on the community and the environment while considering the needs of the customer. Again, how can polluting the air around a neighborhood, a park, a school, have minimal impacts on the community with no data to back this up? Third contradiction: Amazon, along with AEP, states this project is a temporary fix for energy needs. How is constructing miles of an eight-inch gas pipeline for 222 individual fuel cells considered a temporary update? Gas pipelines, by my research, are meant to last 50 to 80 years. We need more information on who will maintain this project for the expected future. In general, just gas bills are already one-third direct gas cost, and two-thirds for infrastructure costs. Who will upkeep these pipes? Will it be Amazon, or will it be the residents of Hilliard holding the bag while Amazon gets another monetary break? Why make something temporary when it requires such large future infrastructure costs? There are so many unanswered questions that must be answered before a project of this magnitude gets fast-tracked. I hope the City of Hilliard Council appoints that special counsel and moves forward in a way to pause or stop the implementation of these fuel cells until these and many more questions are answered, so us residents don't get stuck dealing with the consequences of a haphazardly planned and approved project. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Theodore Canolongo, please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, Ted Canolongo, 4438 Jenny Don Place. When I briefly spoke to Planning and Zoning earlier this month, I voiced my concerns that the unprecedented scale of this project meant there's no empirical data about the long-term health impacts of living next to a solid oxide fuel cell power plant of this size. While that's true, it doesn't mean that the impacts are unpredictable. In fact, the U.S. EPA lists 24 different dispersion models online that can be used in various applications to determine how pollutants, including CO2 in this instance, might be concentrated across a geographical area. The permit to install and operate for this facility addressed various regulated pollutants, but CO2 is not included in that list, and therefore, no emission control mechanisms are expected to be required. In attempting to make a good-faith effort to apply one of these models, however, it appears that the potential exists for residential homes near the power plant to be subjected to elevated CO2 levels capable of causing impaired judgment, decision-making, and thinking skills in otherwise healthy individuals in as little as two and a half hours, even considerably Even considerably lower levels can cause respiratory symptoms in children. However, I'm not an environmental engineer. Seemingly, small changes to input parameters such as wind speed and direction and the height at which the CO2 is emitted could have significant impacts on the expected exposure at each of our homes. We need a transparent, independent dispersion study by a qualified individual to accurately quantify the risk to our families, and yet it appears that no such study has been conducted or required. One could ask how the so-called minor revision to the site plan became necessary. Did Amazon and AEP really miscalculate the power requirements for this facility so substantially that the data center cannot be brought online without this change? Or is this merely an opportunistic move to take advantage of tax credits for fuel cells under the big, beautiful bill and relieve some pressure on the grid? Let it be clear that my health and that of my wife, child, and neighbors should not be sacrificed on the altar of corporate convenience. In their partnership with Chart Industries, Bloom Energy readily signals that reducing CO2 emissions through utilization and sequestration is desirable, yet no carbon capture is being deployed in this installation due to the lack of an available Classics well. House Bill 170, which passed the Ohio House earlier this month, aims to shift permitting to the state to expedite the process for these wells. Still, there are inherent risks with CO2 sequestration as well, including the potential for leaks along the pipeline and from wells. You know, there's a sign at the front of this building that reads, "Hilliard: Real People, Real Possibilities." As elected officials for Hilliard, the choices you make with regard to this matter affect real people: me, my wife, my son, those with me tonight, elementary students, and the hundreds of residents that have signed a petition urging you to action. So I encourage you to continue to explore any and all avenues available to ensure the health, safety, and well-being of the residents in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Lambert? Paul, please state your name and address for the record. You get three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Paul Lambert. I live at 4697 Prestige Lane here in Hilliard. As I've said to you before, I have no problem with AWS trying to find a way to augment their electrical power needs for their side of Darby Road campus, given that AEP cannot supply their needs within their timeframe. If I had the responsibility for operating this facility, I'd be doing the same. Nor do I have a problem with them using natural gas fuel cell technology. The Bloom Energy system they plan to use seems to be preferable to 20 or more diesel generators running 24/7, or worse, you add a set of gas turbines, essentially jet engines, which is what Facebook intends to install at their new Albany facility. My problem is with the approval process. It appears that lobbyists successfully convinced our General Assembly to enact laws that allow projects like this to be ramrodded through the approval process without a thorough assessment of local impact or the participation of local government. In the report by the Ohio, in the report to the Ohio Power Siting Board staff to its board dated September 15th, 2025, has no analysis of the impact of the daily production of nearly 1 million pounds of carbon dioxide that will presumably be released at ground level on site. In fact, it does not even acknowledge that this much CO2 will be produced. The Ohio EPA wants to limit by 2030 the rate of CO2 emission to 1,190 pounds per megawatt of power produced. This is aimed at utility-scale power plants that burn coal and natural gas. According to the Bloom Energy website, their natural gas fuel cells will emit 679 to 833 pounds of CO2 for each megawatt of power produced. The Bloom Energy fuel cells are clearly cleaner than the combustion technologies, just as they claim. But coal and natural gas combustion power plants discharge such gas as some smoke stacks hundreds of feet tall, so that the gases are injected high up into the atmosphere. At the John Amos Coal Burning Power Plant outside my hometown of Charleston, West Virginia, the smoke stacks are 1,000 feet tall and can be seen for miles. I'm not a biologist or an environmental scientist, but I know that in sufficient concentrations, CO2 is deadly. CO2 was once used as a fire extinguisher inside data centers because, unlike water, it does not damage the computers if discharged. But it is now prohibited because it works by displacing the oxygen a fire needs, which also creates a danger of asphyxiating anyone caught in the data center after the CO2 is discharged. From the plans I've seen, it seems Bloom units will discharge the CO2 at ground level. Is that safe? Note, there are several hundred homes and an elementary school within 1,000 yards of the planned site. But do we want tall smoke stacks on that site? I don't think so. Why do they, why don't they use the carbon capture technology, the Bloom touts, on their website? Isn't it appropriate that the local city government be part of this discussion? I think it is. And thank you, Councilmember Cole, for your motion.
Thank you. Trish Barker? Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Council. Trish Barker, 4677 Prestige Lane. Prestige Lane showing up tonight, Paul. Thank you, President Kottone and members of council for your time today. Like many others, I have been trying to follow along with the AWS fuel cell issue. Like many others that you've heard, I've had concerns that something of this magnitude and potential impacts to the city cannot be a locally decided issue or, at minimum, local government feedback. Key items as to why I don't believe this is something that the Siting Board should rule on. The owner of all the equipment will be Ohio Power Company, a subsidiary of AEP, not AEP itself, who does transmission and distribution, not generation. From my short stint at AEP, a six-month stint consulting with them, generation is not transmission, and it is not distribution. So, how does Ohio Power Company do generation when they're not in that business? This is a behind-the-meter application. This is, in my humble opinion, a private power generation. Like others, I think this skirts the Siting Board's authority and the prohibition that a utility owns a private, behind-the-meter generation. This is a temporary measure, according to them, until the grid can be built out to accommodate it. I'm not sure we know exactly when the grid will be built out to accommodate this site. Are there penalties for missing any dates that they give us? And if so, what are those? Well, no expert. I think there are, I do have friends that know more about this stuff than me, some in this room. I think there are other cleaner green hydrogen fuel cell technologies that a business as large as AWS, with a pocketbook their size, could look into investing in and show commercial viability for these. In reality, we all use data centers. You know, you don't even, can't even get on this cellphone I'm holding in my hand reading to you. We just want to have good corporate citizens that care about the communities that are hosting their businesses. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. Sean Lobb? Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Patrick Sean Lobb, address 4436 Paxton Drive South. Good evening. I just want to say first that I did not know I was going to be following people with such good ideas and good facts, and I don't have any of those, so. But I do have a story. We moved here to be closer to work. We, at first, did not know much about Hilliard. It was just a convenient place on the map. But over these years, over the eight years we have been here, we have absolutely fallen in love with the community. We have fallen in love with this kind of place, where we can be part of a neighborhood and know the people that we see on our notebooks and actually feel safe. There's a sense of investment and care in Hilliard, and these are the people who come to our schools, our events, our communities. Like many families, we've thought about moving many times, but each time, we realize we do not want to leave the friendships behind. We do not want to leave the community, the place that makes this place home. We have a sense of belonging and the peace that comes with being a true community. When I first heard about the proposed data center power cell, my first thought was we need to move, because it was that concerning for us. And that thought was painful, because for the first time since we moved here, we thought, we felt, and I have heard from everyone else here, we've all felt betrayed. We feel betrayed by the Ohio Board, by AWS, by AEP. We feel like we have to trade away what makes it special to accommodate this power cell infrastructure. I understand that data centers are necessary, and I know that companies like AEP and Amazon have made guarantees and promises, but they are not the ones who have to live next to it. They are not the ones that have to live with the uncertainty. They are not the ones that are trading away what makes this city special. We are being asked to bear the risks and the impacts while the benefits go elsewhere. It doesn't feel like a fair trade, so I am just encouraging and asking you to continue to fight until it's over. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Kathy Cohen Becker. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Kathy Cohen Becker, 5693 Aristocrat Drive. So, thanks for the opportunity to speak here. You might remember, a couple of months ago, I came to council to speak basically about this, about House Bill 15, which preempts local control and fast-tracking major energy facilities built behind the meter to power large energy users like a data center. And at the time, I testified several times in opposition to House Bill 15 at the legislature because of exactly this. There's a data center across the street from my house, and I don't want a gas plant there. But here we are, and it has come to pass. So, as we, as people have said, fuel cells are not as polluting as a standalone gas plant. They don't emit particulate pollution, and they emit half as much or so of carbon dioxide, but it's still a lot of carbon dioxide. And using the Bloom Energy figures, I also came up with somewhere around 1.3 million pounds per day, which is a lot. In 2022, Hilliard voters approved 100% renewable electric aggregation program for residential and small business customers, and this fuel cell project, although it is for a large business, it flies in the face of that. And another big concern is where the gas will come from. So, during the HB 15 debate, the House Speaker and Senate President spoke to the Ohio Oil and Gas Association, and they made it clear, there was an article in Gongmore News about this, that their vision was to have gas plants powering data centers behind the meter all over the state. And the gas is coming from fracking in Appalachian Ohio. And with Save Ohio Parks, which is a nonprofit that I helped found in 2022, when the legislature passed a law mandating fracking of our state parks, that's where the gas is going to come from. It's going to come from Appalachian Ohio. I know a lot of people there, on the front lines, and now we are on the front lines. And the legislators said it wasn't even enough to have it fracking the gas, the fracking rigs outside the parks, they want the frac rigs inside our state parks. So, what do we do about this? So, I see three possible areas of intervention. One is to appeal the Ohio EPA permit. Ohio has no limits on CO2 emissions, but it can enforce limits under the Clean Air Act. The second is that the Ohio Power Siting Board staff on September 15th submitted a report recommending automatic approval of the project with 30 conditions. So, look at those conditions, make sure they're being met. Finally, another idea is to demand that the fuel cell be powered not with fracked gas but with biogas. So, according to Bloom Energy, if it's powered with biogas, there are no carbon emissions. That is clean. So, where can we get enough biogas to power this thing? Surely, Amazon can pony up. I think my time's out. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there anyone else who wants to speak who has not signed up? All right, thank you. We will move on to the business of council. Yes? Okay, I'm so sorry.
Microphone.
It's on it. Let's staff reach out to Norwich. The chief was very outspoken in the P&amp;Z meeting, as Councilwoman Cole had suggested, and I took the liberty of talking with Sonny a little bit today about it, and they're just as fired up as we are and just as concerned about the safety, and they play an important role. So, I'd ask that we partner with them or have them partner in this matter as well, also to kind of help socialize the cost a little bit, because what, the road we're going to go down could be very costly. And also to bring their expertise and hopefully the state fire marshal into the conversation, because the chief had already brought him to the table at the P&amp;Z meeting and discussed that there was no regulations or way to, how do you put a fire out of one of these fuel cells? There's no knowledge base at all. So, I think that advocacy from that partnership as well will help. That's one thing I'd like to make sure we explore. The other is, this fight needs to be expanded regionally. New Albany's going through and having the same thing happen. Our neighbors need to reach out to our other neighbors and start that conversation, because it's going to be a, it's an uphill battle, as Councilman Teeter said, but strength's in numbers. So, somebody needs to start to coordinate and look at that and reach out to them as well and see what their community's looking at and what they're, what they think. Who knows? It might be in an empty field and they don't care. I don't know. But it's definitely worth a look. And the third thing is, is I read through this, and I noticed, Thad, that you're on there for the Green County Commissioners, and you work for Frost Brown Todd and other dedic, you also have other employment besides that of Hilliard. Do you foresee any conflicts that might arise from some of the other Frost Brown Todd energy contracts or legal services or your services in this? Have you done any vetting of that at all?
So, I don't, I don't foresee necessarily any conflicts arising with the parties to this, other than perhaps for the state of Ohio, but we would deal with that if we end up as the council that would be appointed in any action that the city would take. We may, we may not be. There are other firms that I would, I'm considering reaching out to.
Okay. So, you're gonna, but you'll have a process in place for it?
We have a process in place to conflict check and, you know, either seek waivers or if they're non-wavable, we don't do the work.
Well, and one other thing I wanted to bring, and it really came to me after Mr. Martin on P&amp;Z asked the question about incentives and about the abatements and the agreements we've made with Amazon, and that was when Amazon was a good neighbor. And, you know, if you think about it, the evolution of our relationship, that first data center sits there quietly, it's got a nice landscape, there's nothing to it. I would call for staff to begin to look at the net profit taxes and the calculation allocation on how we're getting paid for the net profit. I just did a simple math, 59 billion was Amazon's profit in 2024, give or take a couple hundred million. If you take that and you multiply it by 1,000th of a percent, it's over 5 million. Our entire net profit tax recovery for the city of Hilliard is, I think it was close to 4.9 million. So, I'm really interested to see how, how are they calculating that and understanding, are we getting what we're supposed to be getting from a net profit tax recovery? So, I'd like to make sure that that's part of this and part of the review, and if you need council action to do that, please let us know, because I think it's just another avenue of what, what is our relationship and what are we doing? And that goes to my last one about the abatement. The abatements were predicated upon an agreement that you would build a data center, and the data center would be this many buildings and this much, and we went through all these development plans. And that's why we did what we did. But now, Amazons came and said, "We want a power plant in here, and we don't have to talk to you about it." Well, do we still have to obey it? And I think that's a fair question, because quite frankly, we, they have not acted in good faith, and that's clear by their withdrawal of the P&amp;Z appeal, you know, site change. They knew it was going to be a no, so they said, "Just forget it, we don't even have to talk to you." So, I would like to make sure that we look at those conditions and whether or not that abatement is still valid, and immediately move to pull that and start to, let's talk from ground zero, because this is not a data center anymore. This is a power plant with a data center attached to it, and that's what they've now proposed, and that's not what any of us on this body agreed to for any of those data centers. So, I also think that it's going to take an army, and this kind of fight is going to take a lot of social media and a lot of work. And what I mean by that, it's going to take networking, we're going to have to start asking people to stop watching Prime, stop ordering stuff through Amazon, start ordering it through Walmart's site. That's the kind of activity that's going to take to start to get somebody's attention that made 59 billion last year, has a boat he can't even get out of Finland to use. So, that's literally what it's going to take. And so, this fight, you got to get started somehow, and they started it, so let's, let's do what we can. So, that's all I have. Thank you, Madam President, for your time.
All right. Does anyone have, Cynthia?
Yeah. Councilman Carrier, I don't disagree with you on the abatement issue, but I know we're on a time deadline with regard to the actual fuel cell issue, and it would be great if we could concentrate on that first, and then...
I'm an advocate of multiple fronts, bring it on, brush, brush the enemy. And we got... And we got enough horsepower in the room over here, and his firm, and the other firms that we hire. If it's four firms versus three, bring it. And that's just me. So, yes, I agree, the EPA appeal is the first, I mean, that's the only one I saw that we had time left on. But all the other avenues that were brought up by the folks today, there's a lot of folks in here who've done a lot of serious research, and I think all of those warrant a review quickly, so.
And speaking of the outside counsel, I would like to know, Thad, like, who you intend to use? If you could advise counsel, I don't know, does anybody else feel that way?
I believe it's our responsibility to hire the counsel. Thad brings them to us. We've had special counsel in the past for thefts or whatever. Law Director brings them, and we talk with them, and review them, and go through it. That's the process I've been through in the past.
Well, that has to happen like tomorrow, then.
Very quickly, yes. I agree.
So, under the charter, the city manager has the ability to hire the special counsel without further counsel consideration unless more appropriation is needed.
Well, then, what I would suggest is we pull your appropriation, and then when we pull it, you come to us, because we're going to be a part of this. It's not just going to be a staff decision. So, we can play that game, or we can do it the right way and involve us.
I'm telling you what the charter says.
Yeah.
If you have four votes to pull the appropriation, then do it.
Then, yeah, then let's get that done right now and get it done, because we want to hire people, we want to be involved in that. I don't want the staff who recommended approval of the site change at P&amp;Z handling that. Doesn't make any sense to me.
My concern was just to make sure that it's a law firm, that this is their specialty, this environmental law, and that they would be advocating for our community. So, that's just my concern.
Right. So, to address your concern, the way to, what the law director just said, under the charter, we would have to hold the appropriation until we hire the lawyers.
I'm comfortable, we're on the same page with staff on this, after meeting with them this afternoon. And I have faith in Thad and his legal expertise beyond mine to do it as a council.
Can I still speak?
So, we're done with the public portion. I'm sorry.
So, we're going to rely on Mr. Rowley to hire those law firms, whether we like it or not.
Dan, can we just hear from you and get some feedback?
One of the benefits of using an outside counsel like Frost Brown is that they are a large firm, and they've got a variety of resources that allow us, in a pretty timely fashion in this case, to respond with the direction that we've been given from city council. So, they, for example, have environmental lawyers on their staff, and we are able to use their resources. It's not just Thad and his immediate team that we're able to draw upon.
I was hoping we could use an outside firm, though, not Frost Brown Todd.
So, I will say, we are an outside firm. We are contracted by the city.
I know that, yeah.
We have approaching 700 lawyers across the country today. That's not to say that we necessarily will come to the conclusion that we are the right firm for this particular job, as Councilmember Cole's motion calls for. Maybe we are, maybe we aren't. But when that decision is made, you know, the charter gives that power to the city manager to hire legal counsel.
You have two weeks to file the appeal.
And no one's saying that Frost Brown doesn't file the appeal, but I'm going to say, as you go down the rabbit hole, we're going to want different firms with expertise, national expertise, to bring about the heat that we need. And what you're hearing from Thad is, it's true to some extent, but the city council also has the right for their own council. We don't have to rely on the city manager's council, and we also have the power of appropriation. So, let's get this issue over with right now, bring the firms, even if it is Frost Brown Todd, transparency would dictate that we let everybody know what it's going to cost.
Well, rather than pull appropriation, can we make a motion to use an outside environmental law firm that has expertise in this kind of thing?
I would think we have the power to do that, absolutely.
Does that work? And I don't know, I'd love to hear from my other fellow colleagues here.
I'm just curious why you think Frost Brown Todd Environmental. I know nothing about them, but why you automatically know that you don't want them?
Oh, well, it's not that I don't know that they won't do a good job. I just, you know, I think sometimes it's like getting a second opinion for, you know, from another doctor that you don't normally see, right? It's getting that outside opinion from another expert in this field. And I guess, you know, Thad, I completely respect you and are grateful for you, but I know you already gave us one opinion, and so that kind of leads me to want to go to an outside law firm, just to get a second opinion on this.
We will follow the direction that was given in the motion adopted earlier.
I'm not comfortable with that.
Can I hear from other colleagues?
Acting City Manager Rowley, I was wondering if you had a process in place to search out additional law firms, such as what I proposed, or if you were intending to just go with Frost Todd Brown? Can you just speak to the process you would engage in based on the current motion?
Based on the timeline that we've got before us, less than two weeks, the first route I would take is to see what resources are available from Frost Brown Todd, to be able to address the appeal that council has directed us to pursue. I think we've got to recognize the timelines that are in place, as well as the resources from Frost Brown that are available to us, to be able to act quickly. If we get further down the road, and we determine that there are additional resources that are necessary, I think that's a horizon that's longer than two weeks, candidly, in order to be able to address the needs of council and the direction that we've gotten.
Thad, do the environmental lawyers in your firm usually represent corporate interest versus the consumer? I mean, what are we looking at in your law firm?
I would say that there's a variety of work that they do. I mean, candidly, there's corporate clients, there are state government clients, there's, and I'm not just talking about Ohio, we are across the country. So, there would be a variety, but to City Manager Rowley's point, if this is an appeal that's going to be filed timely, in all likelihood, it would be, you know, we will take the action to file it timely, whether that is through Frost Brown Todd, whether that is through another firm, whether that is, you know, there are options that the city of Hilliard has available to it, and the power in the charter to make those decisions as to administering the direction of council rests with the city manager. So, I think that, you know, maybe not everybody's comfortable with that, but that's the charter that the city has.
So, the city manager reports stuffs. So, the concern I've got with it is, when you go to Frost Brown Todd's website, it shows that they represent utilities and energy companies. So, let's just get it out there and get it over with. I'm not comfortable with it. I'm not comfortable, and if Dan doesn't, decides he wants to use Frost Brown Todd, and we don't want it, then Dan's tenure here gets limited. That's how serious this is.
The city manager reports to the council as a whole, not to any individual person on the council, just as a reminder of how that works.
That's exactly correct. So, I don't mind Frost Brown Todd stepping in to preserve our right to appeal, but I agree with you, Councilwoman Vermillion, we need a second opinion, almost like the analogy of the doctor. So, that's a very good way to put it.
And again, my concern is just that I would prefer a legal firm that they are used to representing the non-corporate client. And I feel like your firm is the other way around. You're in that space, but you're representing the corporation, but that's not what we need here.
So, can we?
So, can I make a motion to?
To have him do that, and then bring it back.
I'm sorry, Peggy?
Yeah, just a procedural question. Do we need to, if we were to motion this were to go through, do we need to bid this process out? Do we need to get quotes? Do we need to get, kind of like how we did with the city manager?
Fair question.
What does that look like?
There is, there's not a bidding requirement for professional services, legal, architectural, engineering, et cetera.
So, then who's going to look up legal firms that are going to do this, and then bring them back to all the council so we can vote on?
Ray?
It seems like we, part of the reason I think the city manager's given the authority is to deal with situations like this, when we need to expedite things correctly, where we don't have to come back to council to approve. But if we give direction, I guess to the city manager, to work with our law director, to find a firm that focuses on environmental issues on behalf of the public, or on individuals rather than corporations, would that suffice?
It's up to council.
I mean, because Dan doesn't have the law expertise, you know, that Mr. Boggs does to, I'm sure you're aware of firms that would maybe fit that bill?
Yeah, I think Thad just said earlier, he has folks in mind, so, right?
Yeah. So, I think, I think then the question is, the way that this is set up as a council-manager government, ultimately, working with me, Mr. Rowley would make a decision as to whom to hire to move forward with any legal process here. As he said, maybe that's ultimately Frost Brown Todd, maybe that is not. I guess I don't know what more to say, other than that, my job is to make sure that Dan has all of the options in front of him to make that decision in the best interest of the city of Hilliard, and in keeping with the, and following the direction that council has given to push this matter to the nth degree.
I guess my thoughts are, Mr. Boggs is hired to represent us, and represent the city. He's the city's law director. We've given him clear direction on, we want him working for us, and not for AWS, or AEP, or Ohio Power. And he's provided a great legal service to us in the past. I don't think we should take that out of the equation. Now, whether, I kind of agree with you, I wouldn't mind seeing an outside firm, but I think Thad's better off being part of the process than us going around him.
Yes, and I didn't mean he didn't need to be not part of the process, yes.
But I also want to be part of the process.
But still, I would feel better using a legal firm that, this is their niche, this is their area of expertise, not representing the utility companies.
And that is something that Mr. Boggs could recommend. He could recommend those types of firms to Mr. Rowley in order to hire them on our behalf, based on the direction we've given them.
Couldn't have said it better myself. Yes, that's what I've been trying to articulate.
I think I just repeated what you said.
Except that you were saying that you were planning on using your own law firm with your own attorneys. At least, that's what I heard.
Yeah, I don't think I said that, or at least, I didn't commit to that. I think that that's a possibility, but I'm hearing that there is some dissatisfaction with that. And I think I said from the beginning, too, that I would, I have others in mind as well, who may be better suited to do this type of work.
Thad, how many clients do you have that you serve, besides Hilliard?
Me?
Yeah.
Personally?
I mean, I was really surprised to see you on that brief, on that power brief for Green County. How many other clients do you have besides Hilliard?
Why are we talking about this in this context?
Because I'm really trying to quantify what the risk of the conflict might be. Because you take, you have several, the way you operate as a group, all of your attorneys, I know Phil had several when he was here before, and you take that, and then you go look at your website, I'm really not comfortable with not having our involvement in the choice of this, and whether that means we instruct Dan as a group formally by resolution or whatever. I get it, we got to use them in the short term to get past, to preserve the appeal, but I agree with Councilman Teeter, we need to definitely make sure that we're a part of this.
I didn't say we were a part of it. I don't know.
You don't want to be a part of it?
I, what I said is, I have full faith that Thad knows that we're his client, that the city of Hilliard's his client, that these people are his client, and he will give us the proper legal, and he hears what we're talking about here. I mean, he's...
I'm not stupid.
I didn't say you were stupid.
Like, you're talking about. So, I think that this seems to be an attack on myself and my firm for reasons that I don't completely understand. We're a multi-state law firm, we have a lot of clients, we serve a lot of clients, we have a very robust conflict-check process, and that will be followed, and...
I guess if you want some...
We may decide, notwithstanding any, you know, even if there's not a formal legal conflict, we may decide that we don't want the representation for the exact reasons that you have articulated, and Councilmember Vermillion has articulated.
I guess, to give you some perspective, it's when I walk into a P&amp;Z meeting, and the staff was simply going to approve the site change, full recommendation. That's the basis for my concern.
Well...
And it's a fair one.
I think we're in a total different place right now than we were then. I think voices have been heard, people have been listened to. I think all of us have a lot of education to do and learning to do, and I think we're in a total different place.
So, when we, as a council, move as a council to send a note to the power board to reject this, and then staff still turns around at P&amp;Z meeting and recommends it's a passage, we're here having that conversation now, again, in a more serious situation, do you feel that we're in the same position?
I think we are.
Okay.
I think we're in a different position.
Yeah, I'm very concerned we're in the same position, so, but we'll keep on it. My radar's up.
And, Thad, I certainly was not attacking you or your firm. This is simply a desire to use someone whose specialty is working with these types of issues, not with the utility companies, but on the other side of the coin. That's all. It's absolutely not an attack on you or your firm. But, well, I'll just make a motion to instruct Mr. Rowley and Mr. Boggs to seek an outside law firm, environmental law firm, whose specialty is, I guess, working on behalf of the communities, consumers, with regard to these kinds of issues with utility companies.
Second?
Clarification? Can I clarify? Do we know for sure that that specific of a law firm does exist?
Yeah, I have people in mind that I've referred things to, and...
Okay.
...worked with in the past, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'll say to clarify, but to be clear, we have two weeks to file this appeal.
Right.
We can't screw that up.
There's two things that need to happen. Your appeal right needs to be preserved, and simultaneous, but probably of less urgency, while still urgent in its own regard, is representation. urgent in its own regard, is representation for the long haul pursuing this needs to be identified.
In the meantime, we do have a motion and a second on the floor.
Is there a second?
Yeah, Mr. Betts, a second.
Do we call the roll?
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Can I ask what we're voting on? The motion, I understand the motion to seek outside legal counsel. There was no timeframe put on that, and I'm really concerned that we're going to miss our two-week window. Does that need to be clarified in some way in the motion, or am I, is it too late?
The two-week window being relative to the EPA?
Yes.
No, that will, that will get, be taken care of.
Okay, so that's, we're not doing this motion and then risking being too late.
Correct.
And clarification too. So this is, so we will not consider Frost Brown Todd for the environmental aspect of this. This is to forego them and completely go with somebody else.
Could you read the motion back again?
Pretty simple.
I was instructing you and Mr. Boggs to look at outside law forms, law firms who are, I can't read my handwriting, see, who are, I don't know, yeah, their specialty is, is dealing with issues like this with the power, environment law. We'll get through it with all three of us, back team.
Does it mean that we are not expanding our current legal counsel, or it does, or that's an option?
I'm, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Sorry. I'm asking if that motion, as it's written, means that you would not be allowed to be part of our legal team, or it's expanding our legal team to include an additional external firm?
It would be an expansion. I would not characterize our firm as one that specializes in these matters on behalf of consumer interests.
Okay.
I, and I, I will say candidly, I do have a question of, as to whether this motion as a legal matter is, you know, binding under the charter the way it's written with the city manager's authority, but I think that it expresses whether there is a sense of council as a body, that that's what you want.
But Thad already said that he would look outside of Frost, Todd, Brown, so what's the difference? Because it sounds to me like you want Thad out of it, and perhaps you want Dan out of it, and you definitely want all new people, so, I mean.
No, 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 no.
What exactly is it that they're trying to do here? I don't, I'm confused.
An expansion. We, we already said that obviously, you know, Thad and Dan and the city staff are still involved. It's just an expansion.
But he's already going to work toward an expansion, so why are we voting on it? I don't understand that. Pardon me? Just to make it clear. Oh. Okay.
But we're also limiting ourselves by taking out one of, a part that could potentially be beneficial in the end. We just don't have enough information right now to know if they are or they're not, but we're just eliminating that from the go.
Thad just finished saying that his firm does not specialize in the consumer protection field, right? You said that?
That's, that's right.
Okay.
So without a motion, would you be pretty sure that you would be seeking this elsewhere? Like, this is a vote that's just going to be like, I mean, well.
Based on this discussion, yes.
Okay, okay, okay. That makes it easy.
This is worse to death, and it's not getting any deader, so.
I agree with that one.
I, I, I know that council has a full agenda tonight, and I've taken in this discussion.
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Hale? President Cottone?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
Is there anything else on this topic?
Not today.
I know. Yeah, like, three hours ago.
I just.
I exaggerated, it wasn't three hours.
Madam President, I, I just wanted to thank our community for coming through and forward and really letting us know that this was a major thing. Kathy Kornbecker came months ago before us, before we even knew, what is a fuel cell? What, what's going on? And so she was the first one to start alerting the, the community. And so anyway, I, I thank everybody for, for coming out and being active.
We can, we will now move on to the business of council. We have three second readings. Do, will you please read ordinance 25-26 by title only, please?
Appropriating funds for the operating expenses of the city of Hilliard, Ohio for the period ending December 31st, 2026.
This is a second reading, public hearing on this ordinance. Has anyone signed up to speak, or is there anyone in attendance who would like to speak who did not sign in?
I have no one signed up, ma'am.
I'll just wait a minute.
Yes, please.
Till the room clears. Okay, does council have any questions?
No, but I would like to make a motion regarding the operating budget. If you're prepared for that, I'm willing to make it. I can discuss what I'm up to beforehand, or we can make it and then talk about it. It's up to you.
Go ahead.
I would motion remove the new hires being presented in the operating budget except for the police officers, the two police officers, and the part-time personnel, to wait until we've got a new city manager. To me, it seems premature to do that, and my argument, my basis for that is, when Ms. Crandall came, one of the things she did was started to shuffle, move the departments around and move the administrative folks around. And so we could be actually hiring people when someone else comes in and wants to do something different. And it's only going to be a month or two before, hopefully, we have a new leader. And I think it's more appropriate to sit on those requests until we've got the leadership in and they've taken a look at the structure and what that individual may want to do. So that's my motion.
Is there a second?
Ask a question?
Anything you want.
Are you, how, how many of these positions are we talking about?
There were 16, if you count the, a part-time as full-time equivalents. So I think it's down to 13, less the two officer, would be 11 positions. And HR, finance can keep me straight, but there were several positions added in each department that simply were new, new, new positions that weren't with Wreckin' Parks, which was trying to open and fully open. And then there was the two police officers that absolutely want to keep the officers on the street. So it's the, it's really the administrative and the other positions that I think should wait until the new city manager comes on and has a chance to articulate what they need from us and what they want to do and how they want to serve the community.
I would say that, I mean, each department director is very familiar with what their needs are, and I, I just don't see that a new city manager coming in would probably make any changes to what the directors are saying. You know what? We need this. We need these people. But that's my opinion.
President Cottone, a point of order. I think there's a motion on the floor, but there hasn't been a second yet. Typically, a discussion follows, there's a second.
Okay. Is there a second?
Lack of a second is not considered.
All right. Does council have any further questions? All right, Dee, will you please call the roll?
President Cottone?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Hale? Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
No.
Ordinance 25.
Mr. Betts?
Sorry.
Yes.
Pass six one?
I, I would like to thank staff again for, this budget process seems to get a little bit better every year, and it was very well explained and very well. Made it easy. Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 25-26 has passed and will be in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Do we please read ordinance 25-27 by title only?
Amending certain sections of Part Five, the General Offenses Code, are the city's codified ordinances to align with the Ohio Revised Code and to provide for codification of the amendments.
Thank you. Has anyone signed, this is a second reading, public hearing on this ordinance. Has anyone signed up to speak, or is there anyone in attendance who would like to speak who did not sign in?
I have no one signed up, ma'am.
Thank you. Does council have any questions? All right, Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 25-27 has passed and will be in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Do we, you please read ordinance 25-28 by title only?
Amending certain sections of Part Three, the Traffic Code, are the city's codified ordinances to align with the Ohio Revised Code and to provide for codification of the amendments.
This is a second reading, public hearing on this ordinance. Has anyone signed up to speak, or is there anyone in attendance who would like to speak who did not sign up?
I have no one signed up, ma'am.
Thank you. Does council have any questions? All right, thanks. Do you, will you please call the roll?
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
Ordinance 25-28 has passed and will be in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. We'll move on to first readings. Do, will you please read ordinance 25-29 by title only?
Approving the 2026 capital improvement budget and appropriating funds for the capital improvement expenses of the city for the period ending December 31st, 2026.
Would a council member like to sponsor and second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Colley?
Good evening, members of council. We discussed this afternoon the full detail of capital improvement projects, especially for '26, rolling all the way through 2030. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to entertain them.
Cynthia?
Not a question, but again, a big thank you for the way everything has been presented. It was very, very easy to understand, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you. The second reading, public hearing on ordinance 25-29 will be November 10, 2025. Do you, will you please read ordinance 25-30 by title only?
Amending the appropriation of funds for the expenses of the city and authorizing an expenditure.
Would a council member like to sponsor and second?
Second.
Thank you. Ed?
Say good evening, members of council. This ordinance, amends ordinance number 24-23 in which council adopted the 2025 operating budget. It approves the appropriation of an additional $200,000 in funds needed to cover the utilities and expenses for the remainder of the 2025 year in the Recreation and Parks Department. With the addition of the Wellness Campus, including the Hilliard Athletic Complex, the Cos Gray Road Extension in the well, the department has seen an increase in sewer, water, electric, and gas bills, most of which we saw and, and didn't do a great job on, on forecasting the budget with the online, bringing the athletic complex online. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions or comments? All right, thank you, Ed. Ordinance 25-30 will be, the second reading, public hearing on ordinance 25-30 will be November 10, 2025. Do you, will you please read ordinance 25-31 by title only, please?
Authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $13 million of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of funding the cost of acquiring real property and interest in real property for municipal purposes, retiring notes previously issued for such purpose, and approving related matters in connection with the issuance of notes.
Would a council member like to sponsor and second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of council. This legislation allows us to reissue the note for the acquisition of the Wolpert and Cota Park and Ride properties. We have to reissue it each year until we repay the balance. Otherwise, this whole amount is due in January. So a little bit of progress this year. We were able to rezone. We interviewed four brokers. We got the Wolpert site listed. It's been on the market since July. We've been submitting at four new leads from the state of Ohio, Jobs Ohio's Economic Development Organization. And then we take possession of the Chase Building on November 6th, so we were able to do that swap as part of the Cota Park and Ride deal. And then we also have the remnant of the Cota Park and Ride, which is about .9 acres on the market as well. So a week and a half ago, we took possession of the Davidson Road Farmhouse, which was also part of the acquisition. So there's four pieces of property that we're now managing.
Thank you. Does council have any questions or comments?
David, what's the carrying cost of those notes? $860,000 per year is what we're paying in interest for those notes? We're paying almost a million dollars a year to own that land?
Yes.
Wow. Thank you.
I was curious how interest is going.
So there was a delay this year on projects, so there's a lot of interest. And then with some of the situation that was happening at the federal level, there's a lot of companies looking at it but not making a final decision. So we have been shortlisted on a few of the projects that we submitted to the state, great projects from like medical device manufacturing, the, the type of projects that we're looking for. So it's trying to balance offloading the property, so we're not carrying the costs like Mr. Carrier was mentioning, but also trying to achieve the type of end user that we are targeting with this whole acquisition. So it's trying to balance those two.
Sorry. Thank you, David. The second reading, public hearing on ordinance 25-31 will be November 10, 2025. All right, we're moving on to resolutions then. Do you, will you please read Resolution 25R84 by title only?
Authorizing the cancellation of the Community Reinvestment Area CRA Agreement with 4350 Weaver LLC, and directing the city manager to take all steps necessary to cancel the agreement.
Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
So moved.
Second.
This project was one of the CRA projects that were part of the tax incentive review recommendations. This was originally for Granite Enliner, who was sold off, but then the property was acquired by the owner, actually, of Faisal Roofing. And they had agreed to take over the responsibilities of the agreement for both the job creation and total payroll. They failed to meet that after assignment, and then they have since vacated, so we're recommending cancellation.
Thank you. Does council have any questions or comments?
I would thank David for bringing it to our attention at the T-Rac, those meetings. It's very helpful. I think a lot of folks down there were shocked that we did this. There was a lot of huh in the room, but it also sends a message. So I want to thank you for doing that. It took a lot of courage.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, Dee, will you please call the roll?
Uh-oh, there he goes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter? Ms. Hale? Pass seven zero.
Thank you. Resolution 25R84 has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Resolution 25R84 has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Do you, will you please read Resolution 25R85 by title only?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a construction contract with Strasser Paving Company for the Old Hilliard Water Main Improvement, CIPW-49. Authorizing the city manager to modify an existing professional services agreement with Prime AE Group for contact administration and inspection, and authorizing the expenditure of funds.
Thank you. Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
Still moved.
Ta.
Thank you. Luddy?
Good evening, members of city council. Before you tonight is a contract resolution for the Old Hilliard Waterline improvements. This is for a new water line that goes down Franklin Street, Grant Street, through the Hilliard parking, or public parking lot, and down Center Street, essentially from the Early TV Museum area up to the McCoy Center. As part of this project, we added in resurfacing of all the subject streets to, because the water line's going down the middle of the street. We advertised this project for bid last month. We opened bids on October 9th, we had nine bidders on the project. The estimated cost was $757,500, and the low bidder was Strasser Paving, with a bid amount, an amount of a little over $641,000. We are recommending that this legislation, this contract be awarded to Strasser Paving Company, and the authorized expenditure to include their low bid amount plus 10% for approved change orders. This results in a maximum not to exceed amount of $705,600. Additionally, we've selected Prime AE Group to provide contract administration and inspection for the project. Their estimated cost for this is 101.7. This results in a maximum not to exceed expenditure amount of $807,300. Happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do you, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Hale? Vice President Teeter? Mr. Betts?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier? Pass seven zero.
Thank you. Resolution 25R85 has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Do you, will you please read Resolution 25R86?
Amending Resolution 25R10 and authorizing an increase to the contract amount with Loth Inc. Furniture for the well.
Um, thank you. Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
Second.
Thank you. Ed?
Good evening, members of council. This resolution authorizes the city manager to amend the current contract with Loth Inc. to purchase additional furniture for the well. At the conclusion of Loth Inc.'s installation of furniture at the well, staff decided it needed additional pieces to help with our customer experience. These pieces included benches, tables, cubby storage units, and shelves. Staff wanted the furniture to match the existing styling cues, and Loth was able to get it to us before the opening of the well. We do have a pretty sizable FF&amp;E furniture fixture and equipment budget. We did execute a purchase order for that, but we were informed that we needed to amend the original contract because of some of the bidding requirements. So we're asking council to amend the original contract of $525,582.99, adding $17,682.24 for a new not to exceed amount of $543,267.23. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I do. Ed, you're up and running, things are going, you're filling it in, this is a great little example. Are you seeking any feedback formally from the users, or end users? Do you have that in the pipeline with Communications Group?
Yeah. Each day, we're evaluating programming, different things of that nature, schedules and stuff like that. The initial schedule that we set was looking at a lot of the other Central Ohio facilities and trying to come up with what works for us the best. But we're constantly ongoing as far as what we're offering, the times that things are scheduled, and how we're operating.
Are we still operating where the parents have to check their kids in and have to be with them and that kind of thing, like we did with the pools? Are parents able to drop their kids off? And I'm hearing some static about some-
Yeah, it depends on the age of the children. We've got a wristband deal at the front desk, where depending on the age, they're able to get a wristband and go participate in what they would like to.
Okay.
But the challenge we're having too is people's trying to sneak in and, you know, all the fun stuff like that. So, it's a constant give and take and just trying to make sure that we're managing it so it's a facility that everybody wants to come to.
Right, right. Thank you, Ed.
Maybe we should have a competition to see if there's more complaints in the senior center or in the child drop-off.
I can answer that question.
That's a good one.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, Dee, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Ms. Hale? Vice President Teeter? Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
Resolution 25R87 has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Do you, will you please read Resolution 25R87 by title only?
Authorizing the conditional use for a 3,949-square-foot assembly hall used at 3440 Heritage Club Drive within the Heritage Lakes PUD planned unit development.
Thank you. Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Good evening, members of council. This is a proposal for a conditional use within the existing Metro Fitness Building, located on the north side of Heritage Club Drive. It is within a tenant space that has historically operated as a all-purpose flex space, and most recently was used as an office and meeting space. The proposal is for the space to be able to be used for weddings, parties, and special events. The site meets parking requirements for both the existing and proposed new use. Planning and zoning commission voted seven zero to provide a positive recommendation for the conditional use to be forwarded to council, and staff recommends approval as proposed.
Was there a slideshow you wanted to show us?
There is a short slideshow, but I didn't have the clicker, and it's not, there's not a lot of information in it, other than just the site plan and location. But I'm happy to pull that up if you'd like it.
Oh, that's okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
I was just gonna drive, Jackie.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, so I've got it here, if you want to go through it?
Yeah, sure, we can go through it quickly. So, the first slide will show the site, if you want to go. Yeah, so you can see the existing site, the building is existing, as I mentioned, and Metro Fitness is the primary user in this space. And then if we go to the next slide, so this just shows the primary entrance for the Oasis Party Venue, which is on the south side, it's on the south elevation of the building. The next image will show the secondary entrance on the east elevation. And then, we can stop at the next slide, which shows the existing floor plan, and you can see in the southeast corner of the building is where the proposed use would occur.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dee.
President Cottone? There was some public comment that was received via email for this particular resolution, so I'm gonna read it into record.
Thank you.
Because she was unable to be here tonight. This is from Karen Castle at 5567 Brookstone, Brickstone Place. She is not opposed to the use, but has concerns about noise from music being played in the facility late at night. She has issues with noise from Tin Pin Alley and calls the police regularly for noise complaints. And she just wants to ensure the noise levels will be below the required limit per the city's noise control code. She is unable to attend the city's council meeting tonight, wanted me to read that into the record.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
I was just asking the question that was raised via the comment. Yes, I did speak with the applicant, and they assured staff that they would be in compliance with the city's noise disturbance code. Additionally, they did note that the fitness center already holds group fitness classes and plays music during those classes, and they intend to have their music levels at a lower level than the current fitness class music levels.
What's the hours operation of this Oasis thing?
They did not give us specified hours. It is most likely going to be evenings, evenings and weekends, but I don't have, like, it'll close by this exact time period.
And how many people can they accommodate at the facility?
I believe their maximum occupants is 225.
So you could have a wedding party or something there for that kind of thing, right?
Yes, and that's their intention, yes.
So we're gonna allow commercial space to be used for that, is that the proposal?
So, yes. So currently, this particular portion of the building, this tenant space, is being used as an, meetings, basically, they're leasing it out to customers to come in and host meetings, or host it as just like a general gathering place. And this would be a request for permitted use of an assembly hall use, which is a conditional use, and requesting council to approve that, yeah.
Sounds familiar.
The space has, this particular portion of the building has historically been used as an all-purpose flex space. So, this particular portion was not part of the original fitness center in terms of what, how you would normally think of a fitness center. They've had a variety of tenants and uses in there in the past.
This is also part of its own PUD, and so, the assembly hall use prior to this application was already listed as a conditional use available to them.
So that would distinguish it from the issue we've got up on the highway?
That would be one distinction.
That's right, thank you, Ed.
Are there any other questions? Do you, will you please call the roll? Thank you, Jackie.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter? Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Ms. Hale? Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
Resolution 25R87 has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Do you, will you please read Resolution 25R88 by title only?
Approving changes to the Trails Edge Planned Unit Development PUD text to permit fencing per the provisions of the zoning code.
Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
Still moved.
Second. Jackie?
Thank you. We do have a short presentation for this as well, so I'll wait for that to pull up. So, the Trails Edge subdivision is located just north of Hoffman Farms Drive and east of Cos Gray Road. It is adjacent to the Heritage Trail on the northeast portion of the site. If we go to the next slide, we'll see the site plan for the subdivision. It's currently zoned PUD, and the planned unit development text currently prohibits all fencing. And then we just have an image of the existing neighborhood. The city has received applications in Trails Edge requesting to install fences in the area, and currently, city staff does not have any reason to oppose this, and we have not heard any opposition from residents. And so the request is to modify the PUD text to remove the portion of the text that prohibits fencing. This would allow property owners in the Trails Edge neighborhood to apply for a fence permit per the Hilliard zoning code. Planning and zoning commission voted seven zero to provide a positive recommendation for the PUD modification to city council, and staff recommends approval as proposed.
Thank you. Does council have any questions or comments? Cynthia?
I was just curious, like, have there been issues with people coming off the trail into people's yards or anything like that?
No, we, I mean, not that I'm aware of. We have not heard any complaints. I think it's just as simple as residents are wanting to install fences, and this is a very small community, and they knew that their neighbors weren't really opposed to it, and so they came to the city to ask about this option.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay. Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Ms. Hale? Vice President Teeter? Mr. Carrier? Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
Thank you. Resolution 25R88 has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. That concludes the legislative portion of the agenda. Mr. Riley, do you have any updates? Dee, council clerk update?
I don't have anything to update, thank you.